Good morning, everybody. Welcome to the Board of Trustees November 5th, 2020 Board Meeting. If I could just ask everyone to stand and we'll have a pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thanks, everybody, again. Good morning. First up is Hugh. Hugh King.
I can take this down?
Apparently not.
Okay. Thank you. I want to mention something about Lily irrigation. When Loretta and I got to Home Sweet Home in 1999, we found out that there was an underground irrigation system for the gardens. And we found out that Mrs. Irene Tobin paid to have that irrigation system put in the gardens at Home Sweet Home Museum. And then they hired, she hired Lily irrigation to maintain it. Well, Mrs. Tobin is no longer here, but Lily irrigation is still maintaining that irrigation system at no cost to the village. So they've been doing that for over 20 years. And I believe, Mr. Mayor, you wrote a letter?
Yes, it's on my desk.
Oh, okay. We have a letter?
Yes, yes, I wrote a letter.
You will be writing a letter?
Mr. Mayor.
All right, okay. All right, I have questions now for the board members today, and then you'll answer them at the next meeting, and then at the follow-me meeting, you'll be able to answer me, ask me questions, okay? Okay, Trustee Brown, this is going to be a hard one, okay?
Ready.
We all know a village hall was the home of Lyman Beecher, but something else happened at that place during the time of Lyman Beecher living there. What was that? And where did some of it take place? If you can find that out, you're really good. Okay?
Thanks for the hard homework, Hugh.
Okay. Mayor Larson, we all know that mayors in the past have had a job before they became mayor or even had a job while they were mayor. So I'm going to give you three mayors, and if you could find out what they did before they became mayor and what they did while they were still mayor. It's Samuel Gregory, Judson Bannister, and Steve Marley. Okay?
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Menardi, you are the liaison to the beach. You know, there's a sign up there that says Maine Beach. Can you find out when we started calling that Maine Beach? It wasn't from the beginning, I know. When did we start actually calling that area up there Maine Beach? Trustee Graham?
Sir.
You're the liaison to museums. I'm going to ask you about a building that doesn't belong to the village, the LVIS Building. Can you find the history of that building and why is it where it is? And it also has a special architectural feature that may have been the first in East Hampton. Trustee Melendez, you are the liaison to the Department of Public Works. There are three roads in the village that are named after ministers. Can you find those three roads? And one of those roads also had another very important name. Okay? Okay. And finally, it's very, it's a very, very, it's not ironic, it's perfect that you're promoting three women today because the last fact that I have is very, very important. Ashamedly, it's only been 100 years since women were allowed to vote. This is 19, this is 2020. The Nineteenth Amendment was ratified on September 26th, 1920. The election that year for president was November 3rd, just as it was this year. So everyone thinks that's the first time women voted in East Hampton, but that's not true because on October 30th, 1920, they had a vote for the first offices of the village. Donovan Baker was elected the first president. That took place on October 30th, 1920, at Oddfellas Hall. So the first women to vote in the town of East Hampton happened here, right here in the village. That's all I got. Don't ask me any questions.
Thanks, Hugh. All right, yeah, we have some exciting promotions today. We're going to be promoting Pam Bennett, who's been an employee of the village for 41 years, and she's the deputy clerk now. We're going to be promoting her to clerk. We have Dominique Cummings, who is the treasurer, who's been employed by the village for 10 years and has a long history of doing the similar work in other locations. We're going to be promoting her from deputy clerk to clerk today. So congratulations on that. And then we have June, our deputy.
Treasurer.
What did I say? Deputy clerk? I'm sorry. Deputy treasurer for Dominique. And then June is going to be appointed to deputy clerk today. So we're really excited about all of this, and as you get to know me more, you'll see that I like to surround myself with a good team, and I think that's what we're putting together here. So I want to thank everybody for coming, and we're going to start this now. And the way it's going to work is I will swear in Pam so that she'll be officially the clerk. And then after that, I'll let her do her job, and she'll swear in the other people. So Pam, you can join me at the podium? And I'll bring my glasses. All right, so I guess this would be, where should we do this? Probably this is good, right? Everybody good? Turn this way. Just so everybody can see. Yeah, let's do that. Let's move up here. Sorry about the confusion, everyone. All right. Just move over here. Okay, here we go. Ready? Okay, so repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Pamela Bennett.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York. And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of clerk.
Faithfully discharge the duties of clerk.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Thanks. Okay, it's all yours.
Yes?
Dominique, come up. And June, and Marcos. Marcos was already sworn in, but we're doing this as more of a ceremonial type of swear again. Yes.
Individually or?
No, all together.
Okay. Each state, say your name, please.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
June, Melissa.
Dominique, Carlos.
Repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of.
Deputy clerk.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. No. Raise your three quarters, please.
Three practices.
One more. Good. Thank you. Congratulations, Stephen. All right, well, thank you, everybody. That was very nice. And if I could just give you a little background of this. So originally, our village administrator wore all three of the hats. We had a village administrator, who was also the clerk, who was also the treasurer. And then we had Pam, who was the deputy, and Dominique, who was the deputy treasurer. So when that office vacated suddenly, we were kind of left in a strange situation. So I don't think that should ever happen again to a village board. So I think the smartest thing to do is to have a clerk and a treasurer who are pretty much a fixed situation in the village, and then your village administrator can come and go. And it doesn't, you know, cause any instability with village government. So that's why we're doing what we did. So that's all I got for that. So all right, so let's move on to the next. I think we're having public comment. We're going to open up, we're going to do public comments before each meeting and at the end of each meeting. So if you have something you would like to speak about now and leave, that's fine, or you can sit through the entire meeting, and then we'll open up public comment again at the end. So if there's anybody who would like to speak or address us now, please, please do so. Okay. So now we're going to move on to.
Jerry, I'd like to say some words here. At our last meeting, Marcos Baladron was hired at a salary of $145,000 for a job that he was not qualified to take. I voted against the appointment because I had not been supplied with a copy of his qualifications for the job. Now that I have received Marcos's resume, it is clear to me that Marcos is not qualified for the job, serving as village administrator. Marcos even admitted to me that he doesn't feel he was qualified and felt that he would be serving as an interim administrator until either he can gain the knowledge or we can hire someone else. Frankly, I realize Marcos is a smart guy, and I realize also, Jerry, that you want your people around you, and those are the perks of the job, as they say. But I think that we really should try and find a qualified village administrator to get us through all of the things that go through. You know, again, we've had to split off the clerk and treasurer from the administrator job at a cost of $45,000 to the village. When Becky Molinaro Hansen took the job as village administrator with the correct municipal experience, she got paid $95,000. And now we have Marcos getting $145,000 plus, I believe, benefits, which raises that number. I think we have to be really careful about the money we're spending here in this village. This is the year of COVID-19. We don't know what we're getting in terms of state aid and county aid. I understand that we have, we may well have a substantially higher pension obligation to the state this year, and I really think that we need to just watch our money a little closer. You know, we did a $38,000 upgrade in two titles in the police department. I think we really need to be careful about spending our money. And I think with a substantial uncertainty that we're looking at, I think that it's a, something we really need to rein in a little bit. Thank you.
All right, so now we're going to move into our presentations. First, we have the police department. They're going to be talking about their five-year capital plans, speaking of spending money. Here we go. Chief?
Good morning. Thank you. First, I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate the three employees that were promoted this morning. I've had the opportunity to work with them for many years, and they have been collectively, the three of them, a big help to the police department, big help to me, each and every day coming to work, and some of you have had the very same history with them, working together. And congratulations to all three of you. Well worth the, all the work you did all these years. With the police, communications, police department, and operations, our five-year capital plan, I just want to go over that. It has, as in it, three police vehicles listed each year, as some of you can see. Police vehicles are in our regular operating budget each and every year. Each and every year, we budget the same amount of police vehicles. We don't necessarily get that number each year. We're working on that moving forward, but they've been added to the capital plan every year nonetheless. But just like uniforms or any other operational piece of police equipment, they are regular budget purchases. We could not survive any year without additional vehicles as they run 24 hours a day, seven days a week. With police vehicles now, I'm just adding this in there so we're all aware, when we order police vehicles, it takes about seven months to get a car delivered, and that's been going on for probably four or five years. The industry that supports specifically police package vehicles is a mess and has been. It's the only way to say it. They've been behind, they change the vehicle styles, which make it impossible to take the equipment from one vehicle to move to the other. Down the line, something's got to, got to change on that through the manufacturers or collectively through the police industry so that we can get a better bargain and vehicles in a more timely fashion. So you'll see three vehicles on each of the years, 2020 through 2025. The second thing that I have listed in our capital plan, and it's only listed for the first year, are two license plate readers. They're called LPRs. They're for law enforcement and security and safety for the community. You've heard about them, no doubt, and most departments have at least one of them. Bridge and Tunnels Authority has them, the state has them, the city has numerous devices all around the city. They're very similar to cameras. They're quite expensive. They're about $20,000 apiece, and I put into our capital plan two of these readers for the village. And as I'm going first, and fire department is going next, and I think, Highway, you'll realize what a budget-conscious plan this is, and a real bargain, the police department, this is a real bargain for the village, $497,000 for a police emergency communication dispatch van. And I'm half joking about that, but this is a vehicle that the village owns. We got it in 1985, and it was purchased for us with a donation, and it is a Grumman Frito-Lay van. And it was built.
Just to stop you for a second. So we have to know that Mike actually bought this with his own money. So, because we couldn't get a communications van through the village board at the time. So Mike actually donated it out of his own money, and then we retrofitted with everything that's, that was needed. And the van has come in such need and, I don't know if you know, we have all of these outside contracts that we have to fulfill for dispatch. And during a couple hurricanes, we actually had to deploy the van into Montauk, who was actually cut off from communications with the rest of East Hampton. So it's really, for the amount of money that we put into that van, it really has served the village very well. Anyway, go ahead. I'm sorry to interrupt.
It's a unique piece of equipment. Dave Griffiths, one of our retired sergeants, I see Terza laughing, chief, it's, it's a unique piece of equipment. Dave Griffiths, one of our retired sergeants, put a tremendous amount of his own work into this vehicle. Ron LaBrosi, former dispatcher, who has done a lot of electronics work for us, did a tremendous amount of work. Tony Long, our current captain, my XO, did the bulk of the communications, the electronics and computer equipment that's in there. And the odd thing about this vehicle, you wouldn't know it looking at it, it's the only vehicle in the county of Suffolk that can dispatch remotely fire and ambulance departments on its own. The county has, I would say, a dozen vehicles of similar size and use, but none of them can do what this vehicle can do because of the electronics we put in. And the goal of that was so we do not rely on anybody else, because when we're cut off, we're truly cut off. So Captain, could you come up just one second, just describe some of the equipment that's in this vehicle? And again, $497,257,81, a real deal, as you'll see when the fire department comes up next.
Good morning. The van, while not pretty, is very functional and has provided a tremendous service to the community of East Hampton for many years. It has the capability to perform as a dispatch center. If something were to happen to our dispatch center downstairs, if there was a gas leak, we had to leave the building, we would be able to and have moved the command vehicle over to the town police and dispatched from that, linking up with the 911 system at the town. We also have the ability to go to a firehouse, as the chief said. Montauk Firehouse is sometimes cut off for various reasons, and we have deployed the van out there and have been able to dispatch their fire department from their firehouse, all their fire assets. And when the chief talks about dispatching, as many of you know, volunteers have pagers on them, which are activated through these special tones that we broadcast. That's the functionality that we have in the van, and we're able to activate Montauk Fire Department from Montauk. And there's a lot of redundancy in what we do because what we do is very important. You know, we can't have the 911 system fail. We can't have our radio system fail and not be able to talk to our first responders. So we have a lot of redundancy. We have redundant power systems, we have redundant phone systems, we have redundant radio systems, and the van is really integral in that redundancy. It provides us the ability to have backup radio communications with, as the mayor said, all these agencies we, we work for and we provide a service to. So it's a tremendous, tremendous asset that we've been very lucky to have, and we've done it very frugally. It's, it really has not cost the taxpayers that much. So this is certainly an investment worthwhile. Thank you.
Thanks. Chief Terza, you're up. So I think it's important, we asked, we asked everybody to do this in public because we've been hearing this from our department heads, and I thought it was important that the public hear what we're hearing. So that's why this is taking place today, because I think you're going to be a little overwhelmed with the amount of equipment that has been not taken care of over the last 20 years, and about everything is coming due now. So without any further ado.
Your honor, members of the board, I just want to start out by echoing some of Chief Tracy's sentiments about the three promotions today. You are all certainly the lifeblood that helps us get a lot of things done behind the scenes, and it's nice to see you all being recognized for that. So the fire department in East Hampton, we are a village fire department, just for the public's knowledge. We do not protect just the confines of the village of East Hampton. That's actually a very small portion of our protection and response area. We contract out to two larger protection districts. One of them is what we refer to as the water district, which includes areas like Spring Close, the Akabonic Corridor, Springs Fireplace Road Corridor, and the eastern side of the Three Mile Harbor Road Corridor, all the way up to our northern border with Springs. Our larger protection district is more fabled. It's the Northwest Protection District. That covers a tremendous area, basically going from the west side of Three Mile Harbor Road all the way to northwest, all the way up Route 114, up to the airport in Wayne Scott. We cover about 31 square miles, so it's not just the confines of the village. We contract out for those other two protection districts, so we bring in money. We do a two-year contract through the town of East Hampton. We're somewhere in the middle of the first year of that contract. So with that being said, we need some mission-critical apparatus replacements. We start out with, in the 2020, 21 year, replacement of our heavy rescue truck. It's the only one of its kind in our fleet. This is a holdover from the 2019, 2020 plan. The truck is 25 years old, carries all of our extrication equipment, our specialized rope rescue equipment, collapse rescue. Basically, it's a toolbox for any known and unknown type of situation. That truck is our primary line of defense. Carries, currently it carries all of our fans, our smoke ejectors that we use when we go to, all the chimney fires, the furnace backups, the gas emergencies. It is a very critical piece of equipment for us. We look at the price on that. Originally, if it were to be replaced in the original plan that it was supposed to be, it would have been about $580, $580,000. We're currently looking somewhere in the neighborhood of $650,000. So the longer that we wait with these vehicles, especially the rescue truck, it is the advent of our rescue tools, the evolution of them, we've gone from hydraulics to battery-powered equipment. The truck, our DPW fleet maintenance people, there's three of them, they do an amazing job keeping us rolling. They can't get any more electric power out of the vehicle. I've got equipment that needs to go on. We've got the very best of the durable equipment, but I have nowhere to put the equipment to sustain the operation. So that truck is no longer, meets our operational requirements. So that is a critical truck to be replaced, is 25 years old. The next item on the, what have been a normal 20 to 21 plan, is replacement of our engine number five. It's 20 years old. It's actually, it's a little bit older than that, it's 1999. We want to replace that engine now, while it still has a little bit of service life into it. And the thought behind that is, and the methodology is, we have our Northwest Protection Substation, which we put online back in August. The insurance services organization requires that we keep certain types of apparatus there, one of them being a tanker. We have two tankers now, so we're able to deploy a tanker there. The other is an engine. We do not have an engine to stick there, so what we do is, on a monthly basis, we're rotating one of our engines from here in the headquarters building up there. What does that mean? That means that we strip resources from here with a known type of response pattern, and we put it up there. So we wanted to try to get, maximize the life expectancy on that vehicle and further protect our district. We are the largest fire district in the area. We are the busiest fire department. I'm at 943 calls as of right now, last year I did 950. The influx of people from COVID, we've got to look at the COVID analytics to see, our population is skyrocketing anywhere from, we used to be about 9,000 to 10,000 people, now we're looking at somewhere in the order of about 18,000 people, if not more. The building construction that's going on, the things that we protect and cover, it's a wide range from a general aviation airport, industrial, commercial, residential, buildings of historic significance, we cover it all. So we've got to replace that, and the estimate on that is about $600,000. One thing to point out, we're looking at the different vehicles. Through the work of Mr. Cullum in the back, we were able to get the village engaged in a co-op buying agreement, which has saved us tremendous amount of money on purchasing vehicles. It cuts down on the bidding time. It gives us exactly what we need. We're not a no-frills, we are a no-frills department. We don't look for bells and whistles. There's no sauna in any of the trucks, I can assure you. We use the equipment that gets the job done at the end of the day. I believe we saved $150,000 through this agreement when we purchased our last tanker. So there are real tangible savings to it. The next item for this year's plan is to replace the, one of our three Chiefs vehicles. You may have seen it driving around town, looks like a little matchbox car. It's a Ford Escape Hybrid from 2010. It is wantonly not up to the task of an emergency response vehicle. It's all-wheel drive. We go to areas that are not plowed, not paved, off-road, on the beach, because we cover a very wide area. So this vehicle, especially now with COVID, we can't put certain equipment now that we're required to carry in that vehicle because there's just no room. So that vehicle, and the fact that it's a hybrid, it's got a 10-year lifespan on it, as for the manufacturer with the battery panel, once that goes, that's going to be a tremendous amount of money. So that vehicle needs to be replaced. We're looking about $50,000 for that, and we can purchase that again, very similar to what the police department does on the same kind of contract, it's the same type of vehicle. So there's state contract for that. Next year, '21 to '22, we need to replace our hose truck. That is a 1997. That carries the bulk of our supply hose. We still cover a lot of areas that do not have adequate water supply, so we need to lay out a lot of hose. That, we're looking at about $550 for that. We also need to replace and/or upgrade our department's brush truck. It's built in a 1968 cab and chassis, military surplus, built locally in Sagaponic. To be honest, the insurance company wants it off the road. Does not have the adequate braking systems or the electrical systems for that truck, so we need to replace that truck. So we need to replace that truck. It served us very well, I think, and that's about $250,000. Moving right along, the '22 to '23, we need to replace our tower ladder. We have one. It is probably my most critical piece of equipment. It is out of service right now for a major repair. I may not get it back till sometime in January. I do not sleep at night because of that. This type of repair is a red flag that the truck is reaching its end of life, and it needs to be replaced. Replacement on that particular piece of apparatus alone is $1.3 million, but it is the most critical piece. If I have a fire and I need an aerial ladder, my nearest one is coming from Sag Harbor. My next one after that, I'm getting from Southampton. Time is a factor in what we do. The '23, I know everybody's like, wow, this is not good, but this is the state that we're in. The '22 to '23, actually, I'm sorry, the '23 to '24, we are going to replace one of the other two Chiefs vehicles, one of the other vehicles. We received two of them in 2015, and we received them through the help of the mayor. When he was chief of police, he helped us fight to get four-wheel-drive vehicles. Otherwise, we'd probably have a bicycle. That's a true story. So we were able to get two vehicles that came in together. We had been working under the premise of a 10-year replacement plan for our Chiefs vehicles. That's really not practical. They get low mileage, given their model years, but there is wear and tear on the vehicles. So we'd like to try to slim this down going forward, but we wanted to replace one vehicle, and again, that's $50,000. And then we also need to replace our airport rescue firefighting crash truck. We protect the East Hampton Airport. It's part of the Northwest Protection District. We provided fire protection at the airport for many years. We are the only volunteer fire department on the island to have such a truck. Manufactured in 1986 is when the production line started. Ours was built in 1988. Parts are going on it. It's a military-type truck. When the parts go, our guys at the DPW are incredible. They fabricate what they can. Replacement parts take several months, if not almost a year, to get for that truck. We've already established a standard of care up there. We need to keep on going with this. Replacement on that vehicle is roughly $750,000. I think that when the time comes around to replace it, it may be able, we may be able to do something substantially less, but that's a rough number based on the Houston-Galveston co-op agreement. And the final year of the plan is, given the history of following plans in the village, I left the year kind of light. We have to replace the remaining Chiefs car, and that's again, $50,000. I know it's a big nut, not just the way the cycle goes. We get our money's worth out of the vehicles that we buy. We've standardized across the fleet. We have two other engines that are in varying ages that are not, would not be due for the next several years. We've standardized with our vendors to make it easier on the DPW fleet staff for parts, for training. So we've really done everything that we can do. And then the last thing that kind of got thrown at us, we got in a unique situation. After the capital plans were submitted, after the budgets were submitted, the vendor that fills our breathing apparatus tanks, he went out of business. That's left us to the mercy of vendors from up west that charge us a considerable amount more. We're at their mercy time-wise. It takes several hours to get them out here to fill bottles. We had a minor basement fire on Cooper Lane on Saturday. We used several bottles. We turned right around an hour later, and we were in Sag Harbor for a few hours with a big house fire. As soon as I get on scene, I have to make calls to the vendors to get them out here. We had a fire last January in a snowstorm, and it took them six hours to get out here to fill bottles. If this happens in between, we're not going to be able to efficiently do our jobs because we don't have the equipment. So we're looking at a filling station. It's again, it's on state contract. All the other departments around us each have their own, and that's roughly $75,000. That was an add-on. And that is where we are right now. Do you have any questions?
No.
I wish I had better news for you, boss, but that's where we're at.
Okay, next up is the ambulance. Ann?
Hi, my name is Ann Grabaski, I'm from East Hampton Village Ambulance. I'm the assistant chief. We volunteer with 40 members. We run over 1,000 calls a year. For this fiscal year, we were asking for a generator, which I am assuming is still in the works. Our side of the building, the ambulance side, works off the generator, which is on this side of the building, but it doesn't adequately supply our building. It doesn't charge our ambulances when the power's down. We stay in the building on a regular basis to answer calls, and it doesn't supply electricity to our rooms where we stay. It doesn't charge our computers, which we have to use. We have very limited electric supply on that side of the building, and that was for this year. So we don't know where that's still standing. For the year of '21 to '22, we would like to remount our vehicle 9116 in the amount of $174,000. And also in that year, we need two Lucas's devices. We presently have three, but our other vehicles don't have a Lucas device. A Lucas gives CPR manually with a machine, so we don't have to do it physically, and it would make our calls much easier in the case of CPR. And the cost of that is $33,000. For the year of '22 to '23, we need to replace our power loaders. Those are devices that lift the stretcher into the vehicle, so we don't have to lift the weight of the stretcher and the patient. Our core is getting, our members are a lot older, and it's a lot of demand on our members to lift the patient and these heavy stretchers. For the year of '23 to '24, we need to replace our PCR computers, and we would need six of them at the price of $15,000. For the year of '24 to '25, we left it open. We might be needing a first responder, depending on the mileage and the condition of it, but we didn't put it in the budget at this point. And the year of '25 and '26, we need to remount our vehicle 9119 at the price of $190,000.
Thanks, Ann.
Good morning, everybody. And I, too, just want to echo the other department heads' appreciation for Pam and Dominique and June. The help that they give us is incredible. And I know Department of Public Works could not accomplish what we do in a course of a day without their support. Village Hall has been great to us. So thank you very much. So my list, I'm going to try to keep it short, because as you know, we're all encompassing here for what we do. A lot of people look at us just as a highway department. Public Works is far more than that. We're responsible for every village property, everything above ground and below ground, as well as the streets and sidewalks and parks, you name it. We're the, my guys like to say, we're the last line of defense. So if it's not on fire, it doesn't need to be arrested, you're calling DPW. So that being said, I'm going to try to keep this short, as our capital plan's quite extensive. You can see that it was, the total for the five years was $4,718,000, just to give you an idea what we're looking at, and that was conservative. I tried to go easy. There's far more projects on there than, that we need to address than I could possibly start. We're kind of in a situation in the village where things have kind of been put to the side for other projects, and you know, we're at that point now, we start, we need to start looking at our infrastructure and getting back on track, both with repair for infrastructure and getting the fleet back, getting a set purchasing schedule to start replacing our fleet in a timely manner where, you know, we get down 15 years down the line.
It's hard to hear you, Dave.
I'm sorry. Which?
The little one.
The little one? Okay. So we need to get on a regular purchasing schedule, so when we get 15 years, 10 or 15 years down the line, we're not getting hit again with this type of situation, similar to the fire department, where we're just looking at a lot of stuff at one time. So, you know, and with the, with the help of my liaisons, both of them, and their tenacity for getting things done, we have knocked off a few things off this capital budget. The street sweeper, we were able to accomplish. The standby generator, we were able to get. So those are off the list, and, but we're looking at, and also the truck refurbishment. We were able to get some vehicles repaired using surplus snow money from last year. So I thank their hard work for getting that accomplished. So we're looking, going forward, we're looking just on equipment end. We're looking at a refuse truck. We're looking at two small mini dump trucks that are on the road every day. The garbage truck's on the road every day. Our aerial lift truck for doing tree work is over 20 years old. This is a device we put a man in the air, and it's getting to the point where High Rangers telling us, you know, it's time to replace it. So that was on the '22 list. We're looking at about $300,000 for that. We have '23 pickup trucks are going to be coming online. '24, we're looking at a heavy dump. And like I said, this is conservative. Our last heavy dump, we've bought one in the last 12 years, and that one is now three years old, and we're looking, we're pushing out at 2024, you know, five years from now to buy another heavy dump, because we have other priorities. As far as infrastructure goes, the list doesn't end. We need to start looking at further lane, Dune Mirror, Dune Mirror all the way to the village line for rebuilding and drainage issues. Sea Spray cottages, I have listed through the whole five years for maintenance. There's never-ending issues up there, starting with roofs and foundations and other issues. Georgica Beach, the building, both buildings need attention. They need paint, garage doors, there's rot in the soffits, we got to get to it. Looking at 2022, we put in for long-term lot reconstruction. That's the first lot that was built, not the 24-hour lot, or the seven-day lot. This is the day, this is the actual day lot, the commuter lot. And we got an estimate for that, for $200,000 for a complete rebuild. And that's, when I say complete rebuild, that's, we have to grind the pavement up. We just can't repave that one. It's, we've lost that parking lot. David's Lane Bridge in the culvert, that needs to be replaced. 2023, we had that in. And then we get to the highway building. Our bathroom, our bathroom is sadly in need of replacement. It dates to the original building. Nothing's ever been done with it. The shop floor for central garage needs to be taken out and re-poured to be leveled so they can use the lifts in there. We are, we're not ADA compliant in that building, so pushing out to like 2023, we've put in for, to make the building ADA compliant. And we're looking for additional storage. We had listed that at 225 as a, as a, an estimate for additional garage space. So it's an extensive list, and truthfully, we have other things that we need to look at. All the tree enclosures in the business district need to be taken care of. The crosswalk lights need to be taken care of. We need trash cans, and it's funny, I say trash cans is a capital, capital item, but you know, we're looking at a trash can that has a 20-year structural warranty and a seven-year finish. The cans we have now, we're buying at $800 apiece, and they last us maybe two seasons, and they rot out. So it's worth investing in something that's a little more usable. Herick Park, looking at Herick Park for tennis, tennis and basketball courts. Our holiday lighting, electrical feeds sadly need upgrading. You know, 101 Main porch restoration, structural issues. Went to the, let's see, I think you have a second portion of Village Hall project to finish up, and you know, we're just, we're just at a tough spot. And you know, my five-year capital, it's, like I said, I was conservative with it when I, when I submitted it, because I know we just can't do everything at once. But we're seriously going to have to take a look at the infrastructure. And the age of my fleet, 22 years, average age of a truck, we spent $154,000 just patching trucks together this year. That money can be spent elsewhere. So that's basically what I have, and...
Thanks, Steve.
If you have any questions.
It's just, it's astonishing, the lack of planning that's taken place and the amount of disrepair and kicking the can down the road, if you will. It's just, it's just amazing. And now it's all coming due, so we'll get through it. All right, next up is Bob.
I'd like to begin with a report on the Dominique shop project, Phase Two, which is part of the 2021 capital budget. So Phase One of the construction, which began in December 2018, is now just about finished. As you know, the exterior is done, a lot of the interior is completed, and mechanical system's about 25% done. When this Phase One was put out to bid in 2018, the village board wanted to construct a project of about $1.5 million. And Phase One turned out to cost $1,584,000, and has completed about 75% of the total construction project. And the village has received contributions of $584,000 towards that Phase One work. And John Hummel and associates have done a magnificent job, and the village, the building already makes a great contribution to the village. And now's the time to begin the Phase Two, the final 25% of the project. Some of the most exciting work will take place in Phase Two, the interiors of the shops, the forge, the workbenches, the tool racks and other features that will bring us back to what it was like when Nathaniel Dominique was working there. About half the cost of Phase Two involves mechanical systems necessary to make this a fully functioning, modern museum. I have a memorandum I gave you a few, a few days ago about the different components of Phase Two. Drew Bennett and I would like to bid the primary contract, which includes all the work except the sanitary system and some site work. And the projected estimate for this primary contract is $430,000. And we recommend a separate bid for the innovative and alternative sanitary system, feeling that we'd get a better price separating that out from the general contract. And then we have site work for the ADA approach from the parking lot, which we plan to use with the assistance of the DPW, the village concrete contract for curbing and sidewalks. The overall budget estimate for Phase Two is $550,000. This includes an estimate of $100,000 for the IA system. We hope that's a high estimate, but we're not sure. The village has already received some funds for Phase Two. We were awarded a Suffolk County Downtown Revitalization Program grant of $85,000, recognizing how the new museum enhances the North Main Street Commercial District, and we have a $10,000 grant from the Village Preservation Society. The goal is to have Phase Two work completed by July, to give time to have exhibits installed and have the museum open for the postponed Village Centennial for next September. This will be one of the top museums of early American crafts in the country. It'll be the only site where we have a woodworking shop and metalworking shop of the same period together in one structure. So it's a unique piece of local and national history. As you know, Dudley Roberts saved the two shops when the house was dismantled in 1946, moved them to Further Lane. In 1958, Winter Turmazin wanted to purchase the shops, but Dudley Roberts refused, believing they should stay in East Hampton. Their future was finally secured in 2014, when the current owners of the Further Lane property donated the shops to the village. Construction began in 2018. Phase One is nearly finished. It's been a tremendous effort by a lot of people, and now's the time to continue with Phase Two. And Drew and I would like to proceed and put those those two contracts out to bid. In other projects to historic buildings, the Village Hall Lyman Beecher House has just been reshingled, painted, and exterior woodwork restored. That's now finished. And when we originally put that out to bid in 2019, we had the entire Village Hall, including the flat roof addition, and we also had add alternates for painting 88 Newtown and Pantico and Gardner Mills. The proposal came in far above what had been budgeted, so those other items were removed. So we have here budget estimates based on that 2019 bid. We got one bid for that work from Ronald Webb Builders. So if we continued with doing the flat roof part of Village Hall, shingling, painting, repairing rotted exterior woodwork, that's about $220,000. The Isaac Osborne House, 88 Newtown Lane, painting that, be about 80,000. Exterior painting on the Pantico Mill and Gardner Mill, about $30,000. And we have the Pantico Mill was restored 1978, 42 years ago, and it's time again to reshingle the cap and the sidewalls of that mill. I've stretched these out to different fiscal years. They could either be bunched together or separated out. And as David mentioned, the 101 Main Street Osborne Jackson House also needs quite a bit of work. Thank you. Have any questions for regarding that? Thank you.
No, I just have to say, Bob, you've done a great job with that Dominique House. Unbelievable.
Thank you.
Bob took me through it for a tour through there, and it's just your attention to detail is just unbelievable. And thanks for doing such a great job.
Wonderful project. Thank you.
All right, so now we're going to we're going to do resolutions.
Resolution number one, notice a public hearing to be held on December 18, 2020 at 11:00 a.m. At the emergency services building, 1 Cedar Street, 2nd floor meeting room, East Hampton, New York, to discuss the park mobile program.
Can I get a motion?
Yeah, I'll move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Number two, adopt resolution number 67-2020, hereby including a 90-day resignation clause in all future annual employment agreements.
Motion.
I have a comment on that. 90 days is an awfully long time to tie somebody up. If I were looking to take a new job, I don't think I would sign a contract that would obligate me to give three months' notice before I resigned. And the other side of that is that you also, you know, that cuts both ways. If you want to fire somebody, you've got to give them three months' notice and three months' pay. I think that's just an awful long time.
Anybody else?
What do other municipalities do? Beth, do you recall from the town what the policy was?
As far as I know, the town doesn't have a policy like this.
Does it work both ways when you hire and fire?
I believe it does. That would be something that we would have to discuss in any specific contract.
I don't know that that would be, from everything I read about this, I don't know that that works in New York state law.
Right.
All right, so what do we, you okay if we table it?
I think that's a good idea.
Okay, next, June.
Number three, accept Marcos Valadron's resignation from the title and duties of clerk treasurer effective immediately.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Number four, adopt resolution number 68-2020, hereby appointing Pamela J. Bennett to the title and duties of clerk stenographer at an annual base salary of $109,418 effective immediately.
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Adopt resolution number 69-2020, hereby appointing June E. Lester to the title and duties of deputy clerk administrative assistant at an annual base salary of $74,097 effective immediately.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Adopt resolution number 70-2020, hereby appointing Dominique Cummings to the titles and title and duties of treasurer at an annual base salary of $87,720 effective immediately.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Approve the creation of an IT department.
Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass and carry.
Accept zoning board member Elizabeth Maragold's resignation effective immediately.
Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry. I'd like to just take a moment to thank Liz for her service to the village. I think she served on the ZBA for 12 years. And again, thank her for that time. Next.
Appoint Joseph Ross Rose as a new member of the Zoning Board of Appeals, term to expire July 7, 2025.
I make a motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None, so carried.
amend the October 16 motion approving the five-year lease purchase agreement of a RAVO 5i Series street sweeper at the annual cost of $58,614. The correct contract is the Keystone Network Contract number KPN 201501-03.
Just a comment real quick. We approved this at the last meeting, but it was the wrong contract number. So it's just a correction on the contract number. So.
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Approve the village joining the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance as per the village purchasing policy, as per an October 28 memo from Dominique Cummings.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Employ Lynn Baldwin as a part-time office assistant to the Ambulance Association at the hourly rate of $29.29, not to not to exceed 15 hours per week, effective November 16, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Accept Ariel Enga Brethson as a new probationary member of the Ambulance Association as per October 29 memo from Chief Chard.
Make a motion to accept.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Deem the 2005 Elgin Street Sweeper VIN number P4395D and miscellaneous parts as surplus, approved to be listed for sale by Auctions International Online, and accept all bids received that meet or exceed minimum bid set and approve disposal of unsold items.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Approve the reimbursement of reasonable and necessary expenses incurred for David Collins to travel to New Jersey, galvanizing in New York, New Jersey to drop off and pick up equipment, dates depending on weather.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Approve change orders number six and number seven on the Dominique Shop Restoration Project with no changes in the contract amount, as per Bob Hefner's October 29 memo.
Just a comment real quick on this. This was actually approved by the prior board, but but it was never brought to a resolution. Is that correct, Marcos?
Right.
Yes. Okay, so that's what we're approving.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry.
Approve the addition of Messina Hill Perino LLP as professional legal consultants for the 2020-2021 fiscal year.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pass and carry. All right, so that concludes our board meeting. And now we're going to go into our work session. It's a little backwards this time because we did the promotion. I just thought it was more appropriate to do it, do the resolutions right after the promotion. So first up is we talk about the five-year capital plan that was just presented by all of our department heads. Does anybody want to discuss anything or no?
We approved that in January, I believe.
The five-year capital?
Yeah.
But I guess everything was put on hold because of the
Right.
Covid.
Yeah. And to tell you the truth, it's all stuff that needs to be done.
I know.
We just have to figure out where the money's coming from.
Yeah, well, we're working with the accountants and and the auditors to come up with a plan. I know there was a plan on the table to dredge Town Pond, and as we all know, that's kind of been put on hold. And there was discussion by the previous board that they were going to take a big bond, which would include that and other things that the village needed. So I think these are all things we're going to have to discuss with the accountants and the auditors and and figure out the best course of action.
With interest rates rates as low as they are, it's not expensive to do that.
Yeah, we need to catch up. There's no doubt about it. So anybody else have anything on that before we move? Our Chowder Bowl lease is the is our concession at Main Beach. So that is a it's a beach concession that the lease is up, so we want to put that back out to bid. So I'd like to get ideas of what we'd like in the contract, or in the bid. Chris and I have talked about it, and we would like to see breakfast, lunch, and dinner offered. We'd also like to make sure that credit cards are accepted. The past tenant did not accept credit cards, so you'd only be able to pay with cash, which I think is inappropriate. So I'd like to adjust some of those things. And any other ideas that the board may have that we should incorporate into the into the lease?
I think those three, breakfast, lunch, dinner, and credit cards are entirely appropriate. Maybe not breakfast, but, you know, I mean, sometimes you do just like to go to the beach and get something to eat early.
Right.
You know, sausage, egg, and cheese sandwich or something like that.
Well, you know, you have a whole staff up there that could, you know, use that that breakfast. You have all the lifeguards.
No, you know, I I agree where people get their coffee and their breakfast, their newspaper, and they drive up and they sit up at the beach. So I would recommend us allowing the Chowder Bowl to have expanded hours. Right now, if you look at these old lease, it says between 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. and various other timeframes that limit them just basically to the regular day, where I don't personally have a problem with allowing the proprietor of the Chowder Bowl to open as early as they want. And, you know, if they want to serve coffee and bagels, then, you know, they've got to staff the place and they've got to keep the doors open, too. I mean, if it financially doesn't make sense for them, that's another thing. But there seemed to be a lot of buzz and talk about trying to open that up for, I guess when you say breakfast, it just means breakfast sandwiches
Right.
Bagels and coffee. And as the same as on the other end of the day, where, you know, the holidays and the weekends are beautiful days, there are people walking around the beach and having to limit the proprietor in their lease. I just don't know if that's very necessary. I think we could talk about, you know, the bathrooms being open or trying to tie them in, or that's something that we can all talk about to make sure the bathrooms are open. But I would like to see the hours expanded.
I think they could go to sundown. You know, I mean, nobody wants to sit on the deck in the dark.
Right.
And it's not lit. And we would certainly have to make sure that they take care of their own garbage. But I can tell you, going down to the beach to have a burger is something that I would do.
Right.
I'm also for extending the timeframe at the beach. As the lease reads right now, they are allowed to open at 7:00 a.m. They didn't take advantage of that provision, but maybe that's something that we need to stipulate if we do want them to be open at a certain time early for breakfast. You know, we could put that into the contract. Right now, they are allowed to be open at 7:00 and must be closed by 6:00, but we maybe would like to extend that to, you know, 8:00 or 9:00.
Right.
You know, at sundown. I think that that is very reasonable. And I am 110% behind keeping the bathrooms open at the beaches. We were able to do it for a little while this summer, unfortunately with Covid and staffing and so forth. That didn't happen on a consistent basis, but it's something that I've been talking about for a while. So I'd be happy to to see that happen as well. I mean, there's a lot of activity on the beach at 4 o'clock in the afternoon
Right.
Any day. So to be able to keep the Chowder Bowl or whatever the concession is there open later than 5 o'clock, which is what they typically close now, I think would be a nice convenience, you know, and enjoyed by the public.
Yeah, and I think the garbage issue, though, is something that we really have to address with them, whether they're responsible for the garbage disposal or whether they're responsible for schooling it up where the village employees can get it when they do their night pickup.
Right.
We can't have any garbage on the beach.
No, I agree. I agree with that.
That's something we can add to the contract itself, the request, what they're going to do with the garbage.
Whether they deal with it or whether they, you know, to be determined, but it's going to be dealt with.
Yeah.
Right.
I agree.
Two things I want to point out. Also, the board wants to talk about, right now, the prior, it's actually not, I just want to clarify, it's not actually a lease, it's a license. They don't grant a lease. But just to clarify that. And also, current, we previously have not permitted alcohol beverages. I don't know if that's something that's going to remain the same, so the board may want to address that because if they do want to allow it, people do have to get liquor licenses and that.
Right.
So that should be something the board considers as well.
I don't know that I would be against it, but I don't know that I would want them to be selling beers at lunchtime.
No, I would agree with Tiger on that. If we were going to have any alcohol, I think it would be
In the evening only.
After the beach closes.
Yeah.
And limited to a certain type of liquor, just beer or wine, not hard liquor, I think.
But I, my personal feeling is I think we should just, we could explore that more, maybe for next season. In this season, we just get get somebody in there that is good and that will do a good job. And then we could talk about that next season. I mean, I think we're, what do you think? I think we're just running a little
I agree with you.
I know it's only November, but we're already, we have to bid, we have to get this together, then we have to bid, then we have to choose.
I think that as far as modifying the contract or the license, sorry, Beth. Modifying the license to allow, you know, wine and beer in the evening, you know, just because we say we wouldn't mind it doesn't mean they're going to want to do it.
Correct.
You know, because there are licenses to jump through. So I wouldn't let that be a impediment.
I agree.
I think that we could say to the licensee that they, at the end of the first year, can bring other things to our attention. We may not grant them, and we will hold them to the term of the of the license, but that we can be flexible in dealing with some of these things.
Right, we could also maybe, if we did decide to go that route, maybe Beth could put something in there where it can be revoked immediately upon a problem.
I think the state would probably revoke it faster than we would.
Well, I don't know about that, but. All right, so if you have any other suggestions, would, is it appropriate, Beth, if we just email you suggestions? is it appropriate, Beth, if we just email you suggestions?
And then when would this go live?
Well, I think Dominique would prepare the bid, that's what we're working on, so whatever requirements or proposals that need to go into the bid, that's what we'll be.
I'd also like to point out that in the agreement, it says that the licensee promises that the premises shall be used solely for the sale of food, and I really don't have a problem if, you know, as they're doing now, selling, you know, the sweatshirts or sunblock and beach.
It's actually always been done.
Yeah, so I think we should maybe.
Yeah, so that should be adjusted as well, so they can sell t-shirts.
If we give them more ways, we give them more ways to make more money, they're going to find ways to give the village more licensing fees.
Yeah, exactly.
Right, let's make it work for them too.
Yeah, everybody's successful.
And we didn't get any money for 2020 from the past.
Yeah, what happened with that, we just.
I think when they were not allowed to open by the state, they said, we're not going to open and see you.
So we let them out of the.
I believe that we let them out, did we?
I believe so, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that doesn't hold over for the next season, like is that tenant?
They were done, this was their fifth year.
He's done, so just because we gave him a free pass this year, doesn't mean he can come back and say, hey, I still have a year left, because I was, okay.
Yeah, it has to be out.
Yeah, we also.
And is that his, the current tenant, is the equipment inside belong to them?
Yes, it belongs to them, they have 10 days after the end of the license to remove everything.
And when is that?
It's January 10.
All right, so he's, he's got to get his stuff out of there.
Wouldn't it, wouldn't it make more sense that we owned the equipment at some point, only because if we had a problem with a tenant who walked off the scene in the middle of the summer, we could quickly put another vendor in and not have to do all this equipment replacement.
Yeah, but then you also own the maintenance and upkeep and repairs.
And the initial outlay of all that equipment could be expensive, something to think about, though.
Right, but that's incentive for someone to put in a multi-year bid and.
This is a five-year bid, correct? This is a five-year bid, it will continue in that regards.
Do you want to keep it five years?
Well, that's what we've been doing in the past, I mean, I think if someone is buying their own equipment, that is quite an investment for them, they're going to want to make sure that they have, you know, a couple of seasons to get their return, plus some.
Okay.
Yeah, I think having consistency over the term of the license, you know, with the same guys there, or the same owners there, I think that gives.
What's the termination in the lease?
What do you mean?
What's our out?
Well, we, in the, since, as it's a license, we can terminate it, that's the key right there, it is.
On page four.
License agreements revoked will privilege, revoked by the licenser at will, we have to sign them in writing.
Okay.
And that's it, that's the basis of a license.
Okay.
Versus a lease.
Got it.
The lease is obviously more, you're giving more property, you know, rights over as far as quiet enjoyment and things like that, the license, because this is part plan, we have to, we can only grant licenses, not leases.
Okay, all right, great, so we'll just move forward with that, you'll start drafting something up, and maybe if we have other input or other ideas that come in, maybe we could just email them to Beth, and then, what's the timeframe on this?
I don't, I don't know, I think, I think Dominique prepares the bid, so.
Okay.
It's done, it comes through my office, so.
Well, you'll put the license together, and then you'll give it to Dominique, okay, great.
Yeah, I mean, we can put, well, I think what we would, and maybe in the past, they actually have a form that they use for the bids, with the terms, so we'll put the significant terms in that bid, so once we, you know, when the board agrees, and we have an idea of what the terms are going to be, then that would go to the bid, that would go as part of the bid, and then it's going to finalize the agreement, and then once somebody selects it.
All right, great.
What, I don't know how the board feels about allowing this tenant to reach out to satellite beaches like Georgica or Two Mile with an ice cream truck type idea of some sort, I do know that in past years, there is a sometimes need for that, and right now, I don't believe it's allowed, I don't know if that's something we want to entertain or throw into this license, to give the possible tenant the option to do it themselves, rather than compete with somebody else, or is this a topic for another day?
I don't really like the idea of, you know, food and ice cream trucks, you know, they're kind of unsightly, they come and go, you know, they don't usually take their garbage away with them, if we wanted to investigate, as Dave Collins says, we're going to rebuild the Georgica buildings, or, you know, revamp them, perhaps we could consider putting a concession stand in the building, I mean, I'm not against having it at the other beaches.
I think that the traffic personally at the outer beaches would not be conducive to someone setting up a full-time operation, and again, from my experience, every time an ice cream truck drives up to Georgica Beach on a nice day, it's a fan favorite, you know, but I don't know, again, I'm just bringing it up, I like it.
I like that deal too.
Again, not parked there full-time, I know that at other neighboring beaches that I won't name, there are trucks parked, and it's a more of an operation, but again, I didn't know, and I figured I would just throw it out there, you know, I have no problem with some type of regulated type of truck being able to access those beaches when they want, I don't know, do we put that out for a license, or I don't know what the town does.
That'd probably be.
The town is licensed, it's a license.
Yeah, I think that would be a different vendor, too.
Yeah, that's what I would say.
You know, it's not going to be the guy that takes the concession that's going to buy a food truck or an ice cream truck and drive it over.
I'm just saying, is what if they have one, for example, there are a lot of catering companies, or I don't know.
Well, if they have one, they could certainly participate in it, but I don't think it needs to be part of this package.
Okay.
And frankly, before we allow food trucks at village beaches, I would like to hear from a lot of residents, or what they think.
Yeah, I'd like to do that, maybe we could put it on for some sort of hearing and.
Yeah, I'm all for food trucks.
Get some input.
At least an ice cream truck, certain hours of day, it's not like to be there all the time.
People are very protective over the beaches, so there's different, a lot of different feelings about different things out there, I would like to get some input from the residents. All right, so let's talk about that.
Okay.
All right, so Marcos, could you fill us in about the little free library?
That is, Dave, did you speak to Ms. Benson?
Oh, Dave's doing that?
Yeah.
This is a great little idea.
Yes, this is a nice opportunity, I think, and I did have a conversation with Diane Benson, who is the LVIS Nature Trail Committee person, and she also lives right next, right next door to the nature trail, she's very passionate about the nature trail, we took a walk around, we found a location that might be suitable, and she's thrilled at the idea, she thought it was, would work very well for the nature trail location, and it was very positive, and it's nice, it's a, I think the idea is take a book, leave a book type thing, and there's plenty of areas around there, you know, seating areas that somebody could take a book and enjoy, you know, the nature trail, and, you know, read the book and put it back, and we found a location just over the main bridge, right by the main duck pond, and that way, if somebody wanted to pull a book and go down in the meadow and sit in the meadow, you know, then on their way back, it would be right there where they could put it.
Right, that's a nice idea.
Yeah, it's a, it's cute, and, you know, we actually have some other locations, I don't know what the initial plan is, but Herrick Park, or a couple of the other greens would be a good, a good fit.
There was someone that brought this to the board's attention before, wanting to put a little library in Herrick Park.
Right.
Next to the playground, and we never discussed it, but I, I think it's a good idea, I mean, we always want to encourage people to read.
Right.
And there is one right out on the fence, right outside the emergency services building, going up, the only thing is, who's in charge of the maintenance, who's in charge of stocking the books?
Well, this, the woman, the woman who approached us is handling the whole thing, so.
So if she maintains it and stocks the books.
Right, I believe it's her child, right, Marcos?
Yeah, I'm 100% for it.
I circulated the email to everybody, I think Tiger, you did get back to me on it, so, yeah, I think it's a nice idea, we'll try it, see how it goes, hopefully it doesn't get vandalized, all right, so that's a nice, nice idea.
Yeah, we'll have to do a resolution authorizing it for next week.
All right, so we'll do that at the next meeting?
Yeah, it has to be, each location has to be authorized, right?
No, seriously.
Hunting camera?
Right, you can put them all on one.
Like at the park, there's surveillance cameras around, if we had one.
Okay, the next item is Suffolk County Board of Elections and Village Elections, so currently, the village manages their own election, and we all know the last election was a tremendous amount of work for Village Hall, it also, in my opinion, gives bad optics as far as the village holding their own elections, so my recommendation is that we have the county, Suffolk County Board of Elections, run our elections, similar to what they do in the town of East Hampton, thoughts?
What's the cost?
We're working on the cost, but, we've heard different rumors, but we don't really have a number yet, it's nothing crazy, but I know the last election, the last election was.
Was too much for Pam.
It was too much for Pam, but also, it cost us about $20,000 to run that election last time, because we had to, we paid for an attorney, an election attorney to be on site, and again, it's the optics to me, too, and the confusion for the public, because, you know, if you fill out a registration form where you have to register with the county, you check a little box that said you'd like an absentee ballot, you're not getting it from the county, for any election, you'll get it from the county for all elections, except for our election, because we're running our election, so therefore, you might think you're going to get an absentee ballot, it'll never show up unless you contact Village Hall to get the village's absentee ballot application, so it does cause a little confusion, so.
Which would take a lot of efforts off of the person running the election, like this year was Pam, but if she didn't have to do that, then.
Yeah, and then that night, that night, Pam and her staff were here until after 11 o'clock at night, and I know that was a big election, but we don't know what's going to happen in the future, so to take it off of the Village Hall plate, I think is a smart way to go, the county does this all the time, they have a system in place, it's very simple, and everybody's used to it, you know, when we do a village election, this is the only time, you know, you have to get your absentee ballot from a different place, it's, it's just, I think it's confusing, and I think it would just be much simpler, but I'm, you know, I'm listening to anybody who.
Well, we just have to see the cost, it all depends.
Yeah, we got to check the cost.
If it's cost-effective, then we would, I guess we should do it.
I can't hear you, Sandra.
If it's cost-effective, I think it should be a good thing to do, but we just have to see the cost.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not 100% against it, but I'd like to hear more.
Yeah, I think we need more information, and then we can go from there, it's worth looking into.
Okay, so we're looking into. All right, that actually concludes our meeting, does anybody have comments?
Yes, I do.
Who?
I do.
Sandra.
Thank you, so I just wanted to say my opinion, I know, Arthur, you're entitled to your opinion, but Marcos is here, and we believe he's capable of doing it, you still don't know him, but we know his work ethic.
I've known Marcos for a while, I mean, this isn't the first time I've met him, I like him personally, I believe he's smart, but he does not have the background to discharge this job effectively, that's my comment, and to pay somebody $145,000 for on-the-job training, I think is.
Okay, I, in my sense, I believe that's your opinion, we know that he's capable, and he has the ability to fulfill the job, we know his work ethic, we've seen him work, so I do believe he is right for the job, and that's my opinion, okay?
Thank you, Sandra, does anyone from the public have any comments before we close? All right, so take a motion to close?
Make a motion to close.
Go on favor?
Aye.
Close. Thanks, everybody, for coming, so I think we have, who's here for executive session? Second, June. Let me reopen the meeting, are you ready?
Yes.
Sorry, everybody, I have to reopen the meeting, we are going to go into executive session, and if we have anything after that, we'll get a hold of the press, and we'll reconvene, all right, now I will close the.
We have to save.
So you're going to reopen the meeting, you need a motion to reopen the meeting, and then you're going to close with the.
All right, so let me reopen the meeting, can I have a motion?
Make a motion to reopen the meeting.
Second.
Second.
Go on favor, you can't, all right, so the meeting's open, so now.
Close to go into.
We're going to close the meeting to go into executive session.
To discuss.
To discuss litigation and personnel.
And the PSD contracts.
And the PSD negotiations, after that, if we have anything to talk to you about, we'll reconvene, thanks for coming, can I have a motion to close?
So moved.
Go on favor?
Aye.
Done, thank you.